I'll introduce you later.
Okay.
Thank you all for coming. Next item is consideration and action on the board agenda. What's the pleasure of the board?
Make a motion that we adopt the agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second that we adopt the agenda, which you have all ahead for approximately a week. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Now it's time for public participation in this tonight. We're pleased to have our re-elected sheriff with us, Sheriff Norman. Sheriff Norman, will you please come forward? We look forward to your comments.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for having me. I've come to you again to speak about a dare deal. It's got 137 plus thousand miles. It's an old Ford Ford. The dare officer now is about six to seven different elementary schools per year. He actually teaches at about six to seven different elementary schools per year. It's an old Ford Ford. It was actually donated at one time by Q4. It has 137 plus thousand miles. It's basically given us some problems that we happen to take in and out of the garage here at the city camp garage. And I'm asking you guys to take into consideration, again, to support your vehicle for the dare officer. I think I can find the money to equip that vehicle if you guys can find the money to buy it and leave it in the school's resources.
Thank you. I follow your suggestion, and I'm sure that Dr. Fisher will be communicating with you in the future. We don't make that decision tonight.
Right.
Basically because I think that's more administrative recommendation.
I came over for the record, I came over about 13 months ago. Yeah, she said, "Oh, please, back to me." And the dare officer does come out and share some of his limitations, but I'm just asking you to assist us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. It's time now for consideration of the minutes of the October 13th, 2014 business session. What's the pleasure of the board? It's been moved in second to adopt the minutes as presented for the October 13th, 2014 business session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Thank you. Now on to consideration of minutes of the October 27th, 2014 board work session. What's the pleasure of the board?
I approve the minutes of the October 27th, 2014 board work session.
It's been moved. Thank you, Mr. Ole. Ms. Miller, it's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes of October 27th, 2014 board work session. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Thank you. On to innovative leadership. We have a recommendation from Educational Foundation Board of Directors. Dr. Fisher, you going to tell us about that?
Mr. Chairman, I'm out leaving myself. Yes, Mr. Chairman, you know the great work that our Educational Foundation does for our school system. Every spring, and this is just a unique thing in Cleveland County, it's an awesome event. I know you guys saw Ben to the event, but our Educational Foundation gives a $500 scholarship to every senior with a 4.0. And that along with a couple of other events that we do are some of my favorite events to really recognize students and say, "There are great things that are going on in Cleveland County." Along with that, our Educational Foundation is very supportive of many programs that we have. They support a lot of the teacher and student recognition. And it's our pleasure to work with the Cleveland County Educational Foundation. According to their bylaws, members of the board of directors for the Educational Foundation are nominated from the Cleveland County School Board of Education. And basically, we appoint and nominate those representatives. Following, they've been nominated by the Educational Foundation Board of Directors as members of the Education Board of Directors. And we recommend your approval to name these four individuals as Cleveland County Education Board of Directors. Phil Wallace, Ben Cappens, Roger Harris, and Sandy Hammer. You respectfully request that this Board of Education elect or confirm motion.
Board, you have heard the recommendation of the superintendent. What's the pleasure of the board?
We confirm the election of Phil Wallace as Ben Cappens, Roger Harris, and Sandy Hammer to the Education Foundation Board of Directors.
Second.
Okay, these are just new appointees. The other members, are there some going off of the board?
It's been moved in second that we nominate these four individuals, that we approve these four individuals as members of Board of Directors of Educational Foundation. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Pass as unanimously. Mr. Harris, I want somebody to go tell him to come back again. He's been elected. My next item is to consider personnel report. Dr. Fisher, you have anything to add to? Follow that. I passed. Last week, what's the pleasure of the board regarding personnel report? Session we have to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve personnel items as recommended by the superintendent. Set.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the personnel items as recommended by the superintendent. I assume that includes the substitutes. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. On to 21st Century Systems, the EPPEN policy. Dr. Hopper, I believe you're going to handle that.
We do see the EPPEN policy at last point. We're accessing the first read until I would ask you for approval of this policy.
We all discussed this at the last work session. All for me. With that, what's the pleasure of the board?
Policy be approved, Mr. Chairman.
Second. It's been moved in second, the EPPEN policy as we discussed at the work session, October 27th, be approved. Any discussion?
I assume would it be in our schools?
EPPEN?
Yes.
They are already in the system.
Any further questions, your comments? If not, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Pass as unanimously. And I'm saying, thank you. Next is Dr. Fisher. Is going to elaborate a little bit on the first reading of the draft transfer policy.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and I appreciate Dr. Hummel's work on this as well. And as we discussed tonight, I hope Dr. Hummel will take good notice, and I will, as if you have any updates, please be reminded, this is not an action item. This is just information, first read, to have some discussion about this policy. We talked in our work session about the need, and it was a great discussion on this. And I know you've had that, this policy, but I want to real quickly kind of go through it and then just share it, open up a little bit of feedback if we need to continue to go through that. As we work, we found some things that we want to adjust as well. So we'll start there. This would be a revision into policy 4060, which is assignment and reassignment of students. Eligible, it starts with section one, they're eligible students, basically students that are eligible for athletics. I'm not going to read word for word on the paraphrase, it should be in the new pad list of the law, but students that would be eligible in attendance on which they were assigned, and that's pretty obvious there. The part B there, a change of domicile, student would be eligible in a change of domicile, assuming they had attended that school the two previous semesters. So we will allow students to stay where they're at and participate in the eligibility, assuming they've been there two previous semesters. That is consistent with what we've been doing. We would also, in that part, we've actually, Dr. Hummel, I've actually had a conversation, probably created a C there, moving that last sentence there. Students that declared as homeless will be eligible for athletics even if they have not been enrolled, or even if they have enrolled in less than two previous semesters. We will work with our Student Services Department as an official declaration of the homeless student there. That raises in section two, ineligible students, students that in grades nine through 12 who are domiciled inside of Cleveland County and transfer into another Cleveland County school will be ineligible to participate in which will last 365 days until they are enrolled in the new school. And so that's a transfer within Cleveland County. That will be our recommendation. Nine grade students will transfer to the Outta County students. Basically, if you're transferring from Outta County, if you've been with us in two previous semesters, then you would be eligible. If you're transferring from Outta County, that transfer rule would be the same as you would be ineligible for 365 days. If you are from Outta County, also, the North Carolina High School Association, if you're in grades 10 through 12, place it on that. There's a special waiver there, you have to get their approval for that, so that will be outside of the orders around the things we put in the policy. If the High School Athletic Association does waive that, and they grant the waiver, then that student will be eligible. We do have a process for students that are transfer within our school system, within Cleveland County schools, a waiver process. An athlete who has been deemed ineligible due to the above defined transfers may request a waiver by the Athlete Transfer Review Committee in limits of circumstances. A waiver request form will be available in the office of the county athletic director. The county athletic director will notify the student, the parent, and the committee decision. We've got several reasons here that a waiver may be approved. Theater school transfer, if a student went to the theater middle school, that would be eligible at the high school if that theater middle school was two previous semesters. Medical health related, that would be a waiver option there. Specified requirement of social services or court system, student protection, sibling policy, or hardship or special unique circumstances. And as you see in each one of those, that athletic director would work with that committee, and many times the student services coordinator or the person, the young man who's over that program, would help to verify that. If the student had amenable health related issues, then that would be verified and documented on the form there. And then finally, in section four, there's an appeal process. If the appeal, if the waiver was denied by the athletic review committee, then basically they could have a Board of Education appeal hearing to gain eligibility. So in short and wrapping that up, this draft policy, when students that transfer would be ineligible for 365 days, then they could ask for a waiver to gain their eligibility. That waiver would go to the athletic review committee, and I also included a sample form that would go to that athletic review committee. If they met those criteria, then the 365 day sit out, if you will, would be waived, and the student would automatically gain their eligibility. If it was not waived, the student was still eligible, then they would have the opportunity to go to an appeal hearing. Generally, the timetable on this is most of our transfers happen in the spring of the year. This, we get a transfer, a transfer period in February, March, and April, or actually February and March, we're in 2015-2016 year, so we'll receive those transfers in Dr. Hummel's office. Those transfers are usually brought to the board in about May, parents are informed of those decisions. And then we would have May, June, and July to go through the hearing, waiver process, and if the waiver was denied, go through the appeal process. So this will get time for all that to be settled before school starts. We would be open to questions, suggestions, comments. I know that there have been some comments to Dr. Hummel. We have some time in this policy, we'll go ahead and get to you, so have some discussion. We're not in a rush to adopt this, but we need to make sure we do it before the transfer period starts, so we have a little time. We will take some comments that you have tonight, some questions. I would encourage you to look over this, to talk about it, to call me or call Dr. Hummel. We will also make this proposal policy to our attorneys. We talked a couple of other things, we can keep it on top of our folks and revise that again later December, review, like a post policy. So at that time, we could either amend again and then bring it up in January, or if it's where the board wants it December, we could go and approve that policy, which is in January or in December. So at this time, Dr. Hammer, Mr. Chairman, I would open up to any comments, discussion, questions. And then I would like the board members, I know you've looked at it for a couple of days, but spend some time looking through that, give Dr. Hummel, give me some feedback to see if he even hold this to what we want to look at.
Your service, please.
I do like to make sure on 365 days and within our school year. But if there's one thing I've got a question in Dr. Hummel's role that in our workshop, that cheerleader, cheerleading is not a sport. I think we need to bring that in, because we had a student this past year to put in, they were at another school, and cheerleading hadn't started, and they came in March, from my understanding, to put in that they wouldn't be here when school started, you know, the following, that year. And I believe that child had stood out 365 days, coming from another school year. And I understood that cheerleaders don't classify as sports, because they're in competition, and they did cut, so just like a baseball player, football player, whatever, whatever. So I feel like we ought to consider them in this draft we're doing, football player, baseball player, basketball, soccer, whatever. I think cheerleaders ought to have a mention in there.
And Ms. White, I would agree, and that's a great point to bring cheerleaders in, because the cheerleaders are not going to have a good time. I spoke that situation. But one of the things, I know with that, you know, sometimes in particular situations, you know, child wouldn't enroll with tryouts, and it's not that they had to sit out 365 days, it's that they weren't enrolled in tryouts, and so tryouts happened at one time. But we will definitely look at the cheerleader piece and put some caveat in there with cheerleaders in that as well.
So just understand what he's talking about there. It wasn't that the child was told that they had to sit out 365 days, it was just they had to try. They weren't enrolled in the school tryouts, therefore they had to wait for the next tryout period. That makes a lot of sense.
But they were willing to sign a waiver, and from my understanding, they were willing to sign a waiver, knowing that they were going to be here, and were they willing to try to try out even though they wasn't here, with that waiver gone?
That brings some liability questions and some other things, but I think when our move in our transfer, we get to address that. In our policy, we'll look at, we'll look at the cheerleaders in particular to be able to address that. And we can put something in there, Mr. White, that regularly addresses cheerleading as it relates to transfer and eligibility.
Yes, Chairman, Mr. Fisher.
Dr. Fisher, I've got a couple of questions. The first one, did I understand correctly, it said that cheerleading is not in the North Carolina Athletic Association anymore?
It's in the manual, but it's not recognized. Dr. Hummel, you may come up with a comment.
It used to be classified as an activity and not a sport, but the requirements and all the other stuff wasn't in the manual.
I'll have to do a little research on that, and just clarify that we did not say it's not a sport, the high school athletic association.
They call it an activity.
That's right. Please.
And I think you're right, it's covered in the manual, it's not listed as a sport.
It's a qualification and all.
We'll get a little clarification on that.
My second question, North Carolina High School Athletic Association considers the definition of residence and domicile to be the same thing, even though attorneys don't. Is it, under this policy, would we recognize the definition of domicile and residence to be the same thing?
We would look at, yes, the way the high school association puts it.
Okay, thank you.
The other suggestions, as of the moment. One thing I noticed, excuse me.
Yeah, this is just a comment, Mr. Chairman. But I, you know, respect the action of the board, you know, this is not an action, this is not an action, but my point is, while I respect the majority of the board's wishes as to whether they would support this policy, I just wanted to express, a little bit of my concern as to whether I will support, you know, a revision of this policy. And that, of course, is with section two of the eligibility student. My concern with section two of the eligible students, whereas there is a waiver process, which I understand, and I appreciate the rationale, I guess my concern is that it seems to suggest to me that a person who is considered ineligible, subject to going through these waiver process, appears to me that a person or student is guilty until proven innocent, in my interpretation. And again, this is just a comment, and it's not to challenge the provision, I'm just sort of conveying, ensuring, you know, some of my concerns and some of my reluctance with this eligibility provision, whereas they are automatically considered ineligible, subject to passing, you know, those four or five provisions, to prove that they are eligible to participate in this school. To me, my interpretation is that it makes a student appear to be guilty until proven innocent. And so that's my issue.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Fisher, in regards to what Mr. Hooker said, basically, in section two, ineligible restrictions, A, that is what the North Carolina High School Athletic Association says, and we're just adopted that policy. However, we have a waiver process.
That's correct. Basically, to recreate on that, the North Carolina Athletic Association says it's for local aliens to have their own version of that. And so we could waive what we currently are doing to adopt what they're doing, what the high school association says, and then the student needs to transfer.
Well, I think the North Carolina High School Athletic Association, again, has that rule of all reason. I think they need that rule. I would hate being tougher than that. I respectfully disagree with Mr. Hooker with that's why we're, I guess, more than nine. I am for that. I think that's good, because I put that on. I am concerned with the, the and F, under the waivers, medical health related, and we are talking about student athletes. I guess I would propose when a student athlete with a serious physical or mental illness, handicap or disability, would be agreed assigned to play in athletics. That concerns me. Can you give me a situation in which that might, a student might still be playing sports with a serious, serious, serious mental condition?
I think, I know that we have had some students who were hearing it there, who have played athletics, they have played football, or that I guess would be considered under handicap or disability. So there are cases where there are students that fall into this criteria that are ineligible.
Well, I guess my question is, you know, I want to be tough, and I think our ineligible students in A, I think we've made it tough, but then we're kind of living it out here. If I decide I'll come up and I'm hearing impaired or, that's what I pointed was an example, because what makes that student any different than any other student that wants to transfer on? So that is my question.
And that's a great question, as far as that, and I think that the board in there, that would have to have appropriate context, that there would have to be really some teeth behind that. And then it would still have to be approved by the committee to understand that, but I would agree with Ms. Miller. There are many times where because of student disability, or because of medical need, that student needs to be transferred or assigned to this school to meet that medical need, and if that's the case, then that student, we would not refuse that against a student become ineligible. So we would have that caveat in there.
I can live with B, but F, I'm having a real hard time with, because to me, F just seems hardship, special, or unique circumstances. And I would definitely come afoot with, I don't think the committee should make that decision, and I would agree with that hardship is to me, that's a wide open, just, that's you out there. If you don't qualify A through A, B, C, D, or E, then you decided that you made an F up and you're bringing it to the board committee, that we haven't talked about what the committee is going to be made of. I just want to be tough on this. I think that it's needed. I think that if you listen into our committee, I mean, to our county, that this is an issue that, and I want you to address the committee, because one thing I don't want is for the, our community to end up split as it is now on these transfers. If you have two from Burns, and two from Press, and two from Kings Mountain, and two from Shelby, then are, is that committee going to split four and four, and then we're hitting our schools against others? So I don't want that. I want a, the committee to be as equal and balanced, but I can also see where it could end up being one school against another, and I don't want that, or two schools against two schools. So could you address the committee?
Well, and that was in our discussion, that was kind of the idea, this happens to everybody, we extended zone, even on that committee. I do think that with that committee, these circumstances would be, for the most part, pretty, pretty cut and dry, and that's, you know, because like you said, if there is a documented medical health issue, it's documented, it's obvious. I think most people are going to look at that and say, "Yes, that's great." If you have, you know, if a court system is involved, and assign a student, or, you know, they're considered, those are obvious things. I do think that hardship, and that's one that we've, Dr. Hummel and I have gone back to a little bit of the policy, because of the issue, even the high school athletic association has a hardship there. And we recognize that there could be a situation come up that we never thought about, and it was a real situation, and it could give that committee the opportunity to say, "This is a situation that is real legit, and this student deserves eligibility." So those are all leads, you know, and that's the purpose of this, to be able to bring this back and look at that. The idea of a committee representation, when we get kind of the policy after this, you know, we will look at that, and that would be something that I think we would put in our, on that, on the waiver request, what the committee would make, obviously, the county athletic director, and, you know, it'd make sense to have two members from these ten zones and look at those things. But I do think, with the exception of A, A through E are pretty yes or no answers.
Right.
And I do think that F would be something that is rare or certain chance, be something that really is really to find, has a true, special, unique hardship, something that you've not come up before, because obviously, we try to think about situations, we look at policies, but you can't put everything in policy that, you know, may may happen. So, but that's a good point.
Other than that, I like it. I just think I can put it simply before the board. Could you, I'm sorry, I have a lot of questions. Somewhere, when you talk about the committee, they will make the, they will make the decision, and then you just bring that recommendation to the board, or does the board look at one of the committee's recommendation? Am I saying that right?
The way this policy is stated, that the committee would review this, and the committee would make the decision to grant eligibility. And then obviously, you know, the board would look at that and say, "Okay, how many people applied for a waiver? How many gave eligibility, A, B, C, D, E, A?" But that would not as come to the board for hearing, the ones that would come to the board for hearing, it would deny, the board would need, and then the parent would question the people, and that would come to the board.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Your service, please.
Well, if we get it with the North Carolina rules, that would take a whole lot of earth off, but we just want to think, period. But I think on this, a lighter committee, and they put it together and bring it, and I think the decision will be by the board. The board needs to take the stance, stand for what's, but what it is, and the big conclusion.
I agree with the notion of what you're saying, of course, take the stance, I think that's very important. And I hear you, Ms. Ball, talking about making sure that, you know, being tough... Um, and I hear you, Ms. Ball, talk about making sure that, you know, being tough, I think we gotta have a balance between tough and, you know, grace as well, I think there's a balance there, you don't just want to be tough, at the lack of not doing what's best for every child. Now, there are incidents, situations that occur like in the night, where you have to look at each, um, situation individually, and I do like the fact that we are taking into account, and not just saying that if you live in this area, you can't go anywhere else but this school, I think you have to look at, and also, you know, we're looking at athletics here, uh, you know, about academics and things like that, I feel like we focus so much on this, and I know we got policies in place, but I think academics is important too, and I think, you know, we're always looking at this piece, but, you know, we talk about doing what's best for every child and taking the standard, we gotta look at the academic piece, and I feel like we're talking about this, which is important, this is on the agenda, but, you know, we have to give every child the opportunity, and not penalize a child because they happen to play a sport, and, you know, I think sometimes we penalize a kid because they, they play sports, but I do like the work that you've done, Dr. Humble, Dr. Fisher, I think this gives coverage, and it doesn't, it's not so rigid as to say that, you know, if you live somewhere, you can't play a sport, have no school, not that, I think we're given an opportunity, that doesn't guarantee that they're going to get it, because they're going to have to come with more committee, that's going to be made of people throughout this county, but I do like the fact that we're giving ourselves some boundaries to get some freedom.
Yes, Ms. Ball, we did try to use the High School Athletic Association, uh, that in, in, you know, bringing, because they do have a two semester issue, caveat in there, that there's some of those things. I guess I, I would encourage the board to, to, to call Dr. Humble, give him a call, send, send some feedback, uh, through email, call, and we'll talk to you, and then we'll, we'll, we'll make some revisions to this, uh, as we, as we recall this, uh, policy adoption.
I'll call, I'll watch, I'll make some remarks.
We can talk to you, I like to kind of go off, off Richard's side, I, I kind of see a little bit of what he's saying is, is that we're kind of, we're kind of saying to that student, if you move from school A to school B, you're doing it for the wrong reasons, you're doing it because of bad athletic, and we're asking them to prove that, and I feel like we're kind of going at that a little bit the wrong way, and I see what Richard i- is saying on that. Uh, I think we have a, a, a pretty stiff world right now, I, I think Dr. Humble, uh, does a great job, I think Dr. Fisher did a great job when he was in that position, that when we had those red flags, or we had that circumstance, where the student transferred, they happened to be, uh, athlete that was pretty good, that, you know, they did the investigation work, and, and we went that extra mile to make sure that they were doing it for the right reasons, I think we were pretty tough on that to make sure it was doing it, so, kind of like Richard, you know, I will say, I thought whether I could go with this policy or not, is just, it's, I don't know.
And Mr. Chairman, just finally, uh, you know, I'm not opposed to the recommendations coming from the North Carolina Athletic Association, I, in fact, endorse overwhelmingly the majority of those recommendations, it's just an issue of principle, in, in this particular area here, and I'm not opposed to trying to shift, you know, the decision of what the majority of the board feels, it just, you know, my, just exercising the spirit of independent thinking, uh, it's all I'm doing, and, and sharing my thoughts, but not to try to shift the, the decision of, of the board from one direction to the other, I just express my view.
Can I just clarify in my mind, because you said, we have always had in our policy, we followed the High School Athletic Association recommendations, but then we added, our current policy, the way it is now, we added the, the part that, or we adopted the part that the Athletic Association agreed with it, or the LEA could have their own procedure, and so that's, that's what we've been operating under currently, and so, what we're doing is taking that one clause out, and specifying what our procedure is, and our procedure, if we adopt this policy, would be to have a review committee to see if, if those athletes would be eligible to play if they, they transfer, so it's not a drastic shift in our policy, it's basically adding the committee to review those transfer requests.
It, it really is not, the change is, in the past, and this has been the case for our last several years, that basically, if a student got a board group transfer, we make them automatic eligibility, that was, that was our, that was our local LEA criteria, criteria, a board group transfer, uh, make them eligible. Uh, now, we're saying, if a board group transferred, we would give you a board transfer, but that does not automate committee eligibility, now for eligibility, you must go through and meet the criteria for this.
Okay, for the committee, okay, that's, that's my understanding, I just wanted to finish.
I'd like to still, I'd like to say that, uh, instead of just that committee making the decision, uh, on, on, for reasons like that, on these athletes, just like Mr. Thurman said, that are, that are academic students, that it needs to come forward, board instead of that committee making the decision, they put it together for us, and then we make the decision whether they go or don't go.
Mr. Chairman, I think what I'm, I'm not doing, is to work together, draft, I mean, anger people. Yes, sir.
I think there's one area that we have maybe not addressed, really, in here, and that is the area, for example, swimming, at Burns, there's no swimming tent, and if he or she wanted to grant, transfer to one school that has a swimming tent, I think that should be granted, to take the truth. And so, I, I would apply that to even, I, I'm not sure of kind of the other sports, that women's golf is, is kind of, sometimes not one high school, I think, at the same time, I must put in my two cents word, I still agree with Philip, and I maybe disagree a little bit with Ms. Ball, and some others, I believe that we have done pretty well, I think we have had one incident, that I recall, where, and I believe Dr. Fisher, you recommended denial on an athletic basis, and came to us, and we reversed that denial after listening to it, and I also think that, uh, there is danger of everything coming to the board of litigation, of, how to say, litigation, anyway, I think that's, you like, we have a final word.
Let's put a quickie book over there from the head of court, I say.
I understand your feeling, but I, I think that's another issue. Okay, uh, any other comments, I hesitate to say.
Any other comments?
Okay, thank you very much, now, on to the next thing, and remember, you got this time, between now and the next meeting, to call Dr. Humble, he may give you the wrong number if you ask him too much, if you're not wanting to write my line right now. On to resolutions, I believe Dr. Fisher's going to talk about a couple, and, uh, give us a history on them, and his recommendations.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you, and I will bring two, uh, resolutions to you this evening, as we, uh, the North Carolina School Board Association Conference is just a week away, uh, these re- these resolutions have been talked about, and you've seen lots of information from, from the School Board Association on these. Uh, the first one, and we'll take those, these two separately, first one is about school letter grades to be assigned, uh, you know, I know we've talked about that a couple times, that, uh, the General Assembly has created a system where schools can get, uh, assigned a letter grade, uh, eighty percent of that letter grade, there are several things that go into that, but essentially, eighty percent of that letter, letter grade comes from the school, uh, uh, performance composite, twenty percent comes from growth, and, and as the School Board Association, and the School Administrators Association, I believe everybody has concerns about that ratio, that growth is only twenty percent, and, uh, the eighty percent will come from the actual composite score. Uh, so this resolution is, uh, proposed regarding our, um, concern over that, and our, uh, support in, in doing a way, doing something other than, um, than the assignment of school grades, obviously, we don't have the power to not to do that, but that's would be our recommendation, to join with other LEAs, and other school boards, with the School Board Association, I know Ms. Miller's, I've done a lot of work with that. Um, one of the things, as a rest of this resolution that we see, is the relationship between school grades and poverty, three, uh, percentage difference, and that's a big concern, as we look at grading schools on the A through F system, of how closely correlated school grades and percentage difference is, uh, so we have some, some great concerns for that. I won't read the entire resolution too, it's, it's somewhat lengthy, uh, but, but you adopted, I did, uh, we did make, you've got two copies of the resolution there, our recommendation is to propose to, uh, to adopt a resolution, uh, without, you can see what's up at your, at your table, the paper copies, uh, to remove two paragraphs, uh, this, these school grades are not public yet, uh, that is not public information yet, that has not been released, uh, if you remember, uh, the, the school grades were originally anticipated, would be released in October, uh, for some reason, that was pushed back to January, uh, and so the release of school grades is to January, so we would recommend, uh, the adoption of the resolution that, that omits, uh, the two paragraphs there, that would refer to a school and a particular grade as an example, uh, I do not feel like that would be in our best interest, some school districts are going ahead and doing that, but I don't, I think that we all too, keep our channel, not, not, uh, listeners at the school, so you've got our proposed copy there, that's on the boardwalks now, that would specify a particular school. So we would ask you, do you have any questions, or we would ask that you approve that move forward to the School Board Association Conference, to join in with other LEAs, in support of, of, of concern against the state vote to assign the other states culture.
We got knowledge there.
Yes, yes.
If we remove those two paragraphs, does it matter, paragraph four, the paragraph underneath, I think, would be changed, specified?
I think that we could change that, also, that paragraph, whereas other school, I think we just scratch, uh, other, whereas schools, including, some schools, including other schools, consistently, we assign a letter grade of D, yet ninety percent of more teachers from those schools consist, or attend to our state, to me, really, exceedingly broken, that's offensive, so we would need to strike that other thing.
So the paragraph recommendations, which that, just, uh, strictly? What's the pleasure of the board, to hear a motion to the resolution be approved by the board?
Section.
It's been moved in second to approve the resolution as strictly, as I recommend by, by Dr. Fisher, discussion.
Yes, I have one, I, I just will make a point, uh, in looking at your best case and worst case on the letter grades, I find it amazing that we celebrated a blue ribbon school, uh, and we would have no As, so I'm assuming that a national blue ribbon school that was recognized in Washington DC, uh, maybe this weekend, or last year, would not have received an A, is that correct?
Ms. Ball, is that, uh, that information, I can't, I can't confirm that, but that you're right.
Thank you, Dr. Fisher.
Yes, Chairman, I, we've had several rounds of discussions, and, and just take a look at education, I have publicly expressed my, my deep concerns, uh, with this letter grade, uh, proposal, I, I think that, from my standpoint, it seriously, seriously undermines public education, and, and it also, as another example, in my opinion, incrementally dismembered, you know, and, and tears off so many, important, important education, I think it has that kind of implication, I think it has that kind of consequence, that's why I'm so much opposed to, to, to this, uh, it, it can be very demoralizing to our community, as long as to our schools, and to our students and our teachers, and so, I, I just think that Joe Sten is making a tremendous error in judgment, in applying this, this type of grading system, uh, and to the point of, of, of despair, of schools who are in, you know, uh, way on off community versus those who are employed at disadvantaged, empirical data certainly supports, there's a, there's a distinction, you know, there's some disproportionality that exists in those areas, and so, for, for us to come forward with sometimes a misdeception of how those people are doing with this letter grades to me, very devastating to some of our schools, and I'm very adamant about that, and I absolutely express that, even as we go forward, but I hope we can stop, just, just.
Any other comments?
I, I just want, hopefully, would comment, I think the seventh clause in our, in this proposed resolution pretty much states that we do feel like parents and taxpayers have a right to know how our individual schools are performing, so that's not what we're arguing or discussing, you know, we, we do feel like that's the point, and, as Mr. Hooker said, the, the demoralizing, several years ago, the General Assembly did something similar to this, uh, maybe it was more with, um, No Child Left Behind, and we had schools that were doing a great jobs, and, and students were testing very well in the, the graphic component, but not in the composite, and so, they were receiving those high grades, and, and I can remember parents and, and teachers being, you know, so very upset over that, because their school that, where their children were going, that, and they really didn't feel like they were getting a more educated education, but yet, government was saying, no, that school is failing, and so, it, it, there was a lot of confusion in the community, and just a lot of, just, just, I almost want to say turmoil, it's probably not too dramatic, but, but it was very hard, and so I think, for that reason, we do need to do what little, do the good, I guess, a resolution will do, you know, join with the other, you know, LEAs across the state, if any.
Which edge is for the fourth?
Yeah, it does.
Be therefore, be able to talk, expresses in a different vein, exactly what you're saying, it looks like you concocted.
I can't take credit.
Mr. Chairman, I, I think that, that you're right, I don't think turmoil is, is too strong, it, it creates that, you know, I, I taught school for twenty-one years, I was used to giving this student an A, and this student a C based on performance, but that's not what this does, that, that is absolutely not what this does, if you, if you take two schools, and this school has high poverty, and all the other baggage that, that comes with that, they collect that in those doors, and you've got a school over here that has a little neighborhood, keep the same building, the same staff, and swap the student body, now where's the premier school? Same teachers, same building, it, it, a lot of it comes from things that are not within the control of the teaching staff, and like she says, if you can ship a rope, but, and that does come out on the schools, so it's, it's, it's not a fair evaluation of our schools, and, you know, if you're sitting in a school, and you think you've got a good school, and the school comes out, and your school's a D school, well, good question, none of the children and, and the teachers in that school field, they're, they're working their rear ends off, and then they get a D, but it's just not right, it's just not right.
All right, the other question, discussion, if not, are in favor of approving this, and if you're endorsing this resolution, say aye.
Aye.
We oppose, as you may, thank you, Dr. Fisher, on to the next.
My second resolution, uh, is, is a favorable on this board, uh, we have discussed this many times, I, I always want to leave that to, my tenure at the central office for, for the last six or five or six years, I've, I've heard the board discuss this, about local controlled school calendars, uh, we, uh, we feel, uh, this again comes from the School Board Association, Administrator Association, feels like a one-size-fits-all calendar, it's not for the best interest of students, we all know, the prime example of this, uh, for any high school person especially, is the idea that, uh, semester finishes in mid-January, uh, students go on for Christmas break, they're off two weeks, they come back, and they're at school for, for a week and a half, two weeks, and then they take exams, I will, uh, go back and reminisce, as the interim high school principal, I went to, uh, one time to serve, and, and, uh, that was the time where we went to school for a week, and it had a big, big snow, and I thought, uh, we would never administer exams that week, because it kept pushing back and pushing back, and, and obviously, that's not just the best interest of students, because the students are in there, and they forget, if we're not, we're going to come every day and look at something every day, we forget, so, uh, we, this resolution supports local control of school calendars, where you as a board of education have the, the right to set school calendars, some people argue that you have the right to set school calendar, uh, and you do, but you have such a tight, like, uh... calendar, and you do, but you have such a tight window, when school has to start, when school has to stop, that is, is, it challenges, challenges. One other thing that's lost many times in this is, we talk about the exams at Christmas, we also talk about AP exams, that students have to take AP exam at a set time, and if we don't set, we don't have that power to set that, that's set by some AP, and our students, if we start that semester to end of January, that AP test comes about 12 weeks into the semester, where we would buy a calendar of, and have local control, our students are taking an AP exam, would have, you know, more appropriate time, and that, that impacts our students, because our students, they're taking these AP courses, are competing against students from South Carolina, Tennessee, or Virginia, who, who, just local boards have, have that control. So this resolution, again, I won't, I won't read it to you in its entirety, but this resolution does, does ask to, the General Assembly Mayor, in support of the School Board Association and Administrator Associations, to be able to, to restore local, local school boards for set timers.
It is with great pleasure, but I'd like to make a question to the second resolution, our local school calendar article.
And moved in second, we, with which is approved, enthusiastic pleasure.
How hard are you?
Okay.
Great pleasure.
Accept that recommendation, superintendent with regard to this resolution. Any discussion?
Yeah, I would like to just, I don't want Dr. Fisher saying, because in the previous three years, I do have a son that has taken AP classes, and I, I have, I have, Dr. Fisher, I believe those AP exams were held May fifth, school began around June the 10th, so he lost about four weeks of education that he did not get to, I mean, not just my child, all the kids that were taking that AP exam lost four weeks of education in that process. That's a big difference.
Have we ever adopted such a resolution?
I think we have, yes, we've been, for the 10 years that we've been marched yet, this has come on, and I almost feel like we ought to do this in all my office.
She didn't even copy.
Yeah, but I, I think that if the association feels that there is a little bit of movement maybe in, in the General Assembly towards this, and so that there is, you know, if that, the administrators, including the next, why it's coming back to us again to, to adopt it.
There be no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass as unanimously. Mr. Lee, I believe you're gonna tell us about source justification for the DC department.
Mr. Chairman, with the board, Dr. Fisher, we have impacted a source request from the DC department, basically, that point of committee, at work for a year to evaluate the materials, to help in the social assessment skills of the students, and to help the teachers in fulfilling the IEP requirements, there was one set of materials that we have all of the committee's requirements, and that is the second step materials by committee for children. We have also impacted a lot of committee for children, certifying that they are the sole publisher of these materials, we would respectfully request that the board approve this source request, so that the DC department can report with committee recommendation.
What's the pleasure of the board? To approve. It's been moved to, and seconded to approve the recommendation. Dr. Lee, or Mr. Lee, any questions or comments, questions for Mr. Lee? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you, David, appreciate it. Next, this consideration of student transfer request, Dr. Fisher, if you had any to add to those that have been before, saw week, last week, what's the pleasure of the board?
Student transfer, that's content, that's seconded.
And moved in second to approve the student transfer request, as recommended by staff, Dr. Fisher. Any discussion?
Yes.
Lady Parker.
I just have a question, Dr. Nollway, regards to our student that is transferring from South Carolina, do they have a release from, I know they've been here and have moved, do they have a release from the South side of the school? Okay, that's my question.
Yes, Chairman, please.
I have, I've got two, are they residing here in North Caro, in North Carolina now, or are they commuting from South Carolina to here?
So they're, they're, they're in South Carolina.
They still live in South Carolina?
So they live in Har County, Pearl, they moved to South Carolina, and would like to finish high school at that first high school.
Okay, and second, we're sending a problem, there are one issue here, and other issues, we're sending a problem to another school.
I basically, that, just do that.
Either me, I'm sorry.
No, they're not, answer to your question.
Thank you.
Ms. Pauls, you got to set high dreams.
Yes.
Any further discussion?
I'm blocking, I can't say I would.
All in favor of approving the student transfer request, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously. Next, the board will entertain a motion to recess back to the executive session on discipline here. The here's.
Seconded.
And moved in seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you.
Seconded.
And moved in second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, passes unanimously, thank you.